Good morning. If I could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting of our mindful of our obligation, grant us dear Lord wisdom, tolerance, and courage that will serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Good morning, everyone.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of April 21st and also the special meeting of April 25th.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, public comment regarding any pending resolutions. Think...okay, we have many. All right, next resolution. County engineer, we have Dan here today, thank you.
Morning. I have two resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is approving change two for the Friendsville Road Bridge rehab project. And the second resolution ending the public convenience of welfare for the resurfacing of the Medina County Job and Fish Reap Parking Lot and advertising for bids.
I move to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Please don't forget to vote.
Thank you, Dan.
See you, guys.
So we have Nicole Lee, human resources assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two resolutions for you today. The first one is approving personnel changes. We have three years, one at Sanitip Building, one shelter, rate increases, three at sanitary, two at JF, one voluntary demotion at JFS, two PCN changes at Office for Older Adults, one leave of absence at Solid Waste District, one retirement at County Home, and two probationary removals, one at Solid Waste. The second resolution is a three-year agreement between Medina County Sheriff and Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Lieutenants.
I move to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, next we have Brett Thomas, our final.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have five or six resolutions for your considerations. The first one is just an appropriations resolution, increasing budgets, whole movements for the print shop for new equipment, and movement for home. Second resolution is to transfer funds from veterans for vehicle maintenance. The petition is for purchase of 6,900 gallons for the engineering center. We had made calls out to five tiers, lowest one is provided from Ports Petroleum. The fourth item is for excess property disposal. We have tables for you. Table A is items that currently have no value and are sectioned of. Table B is a set of items that we will put up for other method of disposal for the public. Fifth resolution, just attending conventions, travel, et cetera. Please note here for out of state for veteran services and sanitary. Sixth one is our just weekly bills in the amount of $247,276.21 fee for the week. All of the invoices are currently stored at the Auditor's Office.
Move to approve the sixth resolution.
Second.
He's...roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have Denise Testa from Planning Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so this week is our Planning Commission meeting at 6:30. This went in room B, so we have four items on our agenda, including one replat in Liverpool, a final plat in Sharon Township, and a preliminary plan extension in Montville, as well as a Sharon Township Amendment. For June 7th, which we know is going to be a lot, we are looking at Wadsworth Township amendments, as well as a plat in Gray, and a revised preliminary plan in Sharon. For our community development block grant, the low ground, we've ordered the additional equipment, which will be installed in June, so we're going to wrap up that project. The Montville Cobblestone Park pathway phase construction is scheduled to begin on May 15th, so this will close out CDBG 2020 projects. For 2022, the United National Empowerment Center located just below Honeybee Bakery on the square up and running. The Wadsworth homelessness program is also running, homeless pension program is running as well. We are out to bid for the sidewalk project at Wadsworth, as well as we're preparing bid documents for the Brunswick Street repavement, the Montville Pathway Phase 3, or Pathway, as well as the Lowdi Project, which is way for disabled citizens. Lots going on with C, we are also in this of exploring options to update our fair analysis of impediments, which will be due in July of 2024. And you wonder why I get my dates mixed up, so, sometimes. With that in mind, for our community housing improvement program, also known as, we completed our first public hearing in May 1st for a June 20th application deadline, so we're in the throes at that, working with our consultant Felder. For our critical infrastructure projects, the Critical Infrastructure Drive, Chippewa Lake paving, the second layer will be in very soon, so that project will conclude. The ARPA project, which is the Chippewa Lake Phase 2 main drive, that was being completed, now the prep work. The Lowdi Community Bridge replacement, so this is the new bridge in the community park, package is currently being reviewed by the village and the county legal councils. We are continuing to meet with our housing clients, and other than that, that is all I have today. Do you have questions?
I do not.
Nope.
Great job.
All right, thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thanks. Okay, so we have a proclamation today. The Commissioners are proclaiming May as 2023 Americans' Month, and May 16th as Senior Day in Medina County, which will be held at the Fairgrounds.
Approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, we have a few Commissioners. We have a resolution reappointing members to the Medina County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Board. We are reappointing Lou Delosse and Stuart Root.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. We are also appointing a member to County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability, and we are appointing Jeanette Fagan.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Okay, we also are approving an amendment agreement, establish a countywide emergency management agency.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just, this is the agreement we've been talking about for the last number of months.
Yes.
And we had the EMA Executive Committee last week to discuss, and that this rises the language so that we can send this out to the communities and the jurisdictions their approval.
I think the changes are really good. They represent the community. I liken of the sheriff on our EMA board. I think it really is a good list of representatives.
And it was, more agreement we presented to the committee, but there were a couple changes that the committee suggested last week that we were able to, so, yeah, I look forward to getting this circulated and approved by the subdivision.
Yeah, I think largely it was ones of clarity as opposed to substance, which is, at least we were dealing with the 90-39 version, clarity was, it becomes less clear over time, and I hopefully this one will stand the test of time.
Having one agreement makes it clearer.
Indeed.
Okay, roll.
Hambligh.
Yes.
Harrison.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, next, do we have any, I do not think we have any public comments, so we are going...
The annexation.
It wasn't in my packet.
Maybe it got...
Okay, we have one more resolution, approving the petition for annexation of 0.733 acres of land known as being part of Wadsworth Township, of Wadsworth, Medina County, Ohio pursuant to ORC 709.2.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just the annexation where the, all the interested parties agree.
Yes, the ones are much simpler. Roll.
Hambligh.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, we are moving action session. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Good morning. I have two things to discuss with you here. First, I want to talk about State Route 18. We have a work project there to replace the existing sanitary sewers, to enlarge them. We have Jones Engineer working on that project. Couple weeks ago, we had a forced main break between State Road and Medina Line Road, which has outboarded this project. And these, we've had actually two breaks on this sanitary force main over the last couple of years, and each repair has been over $100,000, just due to the depth of force main. The force main average is probably 15, around 15 to 17 feet, a lot deeper than a typical five-foot-deep force main. So the thought was to include this, to replace this 4,700-feet main as part of our large State Route 18 project. It's probably about $1 million or so to the project cost, and for design services, we're looking at about $1,000 that we would have to do an amendment to, so just wanted to get support to have this replaced. I think it's needed here, just to shawl it up, and so, if we're in a grants, I'll go ahead and get resolution to amend.
I'm good with it.
Definitely.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Next item is our Chippewa wastewater treatment plant. I had sent over a study that HDR engineers had provided that got finalized, I want to say in early April. We had them look at basically two, three options. One, the plant was originally 1925, so, and there's been an upgrade, I believe, in 1965 or one in 1986, and that was due to findings and orders from the Ohio, nothing has been done since then. So we had them look at it, can we rebuild the existing plant? Do we want to replace the plant, or do we, or potentially turn that wastewater treatment plant into a pump station, into our Liverpool gravity? So after looking through this report, the end recommendation here due to quite a few items here, longer meet current standards, is the recommendation would be to rebuild the new plant that Commissioners do own adjacent property east of the current plant, where they could build the new plant, keep the old one in service, decommission the old plant once the new one's in place. Now, it does have the price tag of about, they estimated at close to $32 million for it, so that is a rather large price tag, and we're probably going to look at, 10% of that would be engineering services, so we're probably looking at about $3 million in engineering services to have the plant designed. So just have discussion, you know, the process of this...
Yeah, I was hoping you could discuss. I know a couple of years ago, we had talked about turning it into a pump station, and it just highlights the reason that is not really an effective decision right now.
So in looking at, when the engineer looked at this, they estimated that this cost us $70 million. Reasons for that is that, you know, you have a, you have the existing plant, you're going to have to pump that north, and that's going to hit three other pumps that will then need to be resized, larger pumps, permanent, and then you also have the existing infrastructure that never was going to take flow from a treatment plant that would then need to be, the capacity of those sewers would have to be replaced with larger sewers to handle that additional flood. So when you take into account all these pump stations and all the other sewers that will have to be upsized, that price tag, they're estimating, you know, 30,000 foot level is about 70 million for all that kind of work, so.
So for Mari, is the new plant is the most effective?
In 2000, that was the anticipation with buying that additional, rather than looking, and I know it was reasonable to look at an alternative, but obviously, since it is cost prohibitive, it only makes sense to look at the investment in that. And I know that largely was driving this is the water quality state, the 10 states standard of other states. We have to deal with, I think we have to make sure that we have, obviously, the aging of the technology and the equipment, so there's going to be a move forward with that study. I did want to bring up the issue, also, as part of that contract design, is also look at the surface or the area to be served. We've been constrained for the last 40 years as it could serve, and we've, all development plans, the land use plan, everything has been bound that limitically. Now, the ability of, if we're going to building a $32 million plant, should we look at incapacity? It has water quality implications, but also land use implications. I think certainly, can you do, we do that? Yes. Should we? That's, I think, community planning is going to have to be involved. This is where we talk to, have to, I think, look at the technology, look at what we can do in terms of gravity, using current, what areas we can serve, should we expand it, and then, of course, involve the local community or zoning and the local property owners as to what their desires are for the future. This is a 100-years kind of scenario.
Good for us, that we have all our boxes, that makes, you know, agree that we want to do like as part of our design services, maybe we could do like a serviceability study to, if we replace it as is, this is what we can service. If some sewers are deepened, as you can get gravity service out to here, but, you know, again, there's additional cost with the...
And we do have, and I, that's where, and I've talked to Denise Testa as well as Beth, that as part of the process, that they certainly can bring some of the, well, the community and some of the business interests, as well as the township officials and property owners in to kind of put into what we ought to be doing. The way I look at it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the more people, well, let's just say, the more customers you have, the more it is, and absent any kind of grants. So we'll have to go after grants, reduce the cost, but secondly, if we have more customers, it not help pay for it, but also the quality of the area.
Correct.
And I think that's, obviously, the health department's involved with that discussion, but I think this is one of those where I think a good planning effort will have to occur. But this is a once-in-a-year kind of event.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think, so I'd like to talk to Denise, and if we're in agreement to move forward as part of the contract, make sure that we include the local community. I know we already had communication from one of the township, Westfield Township, about this.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, and I'm guessing, you know, three, I mean, from, from right now, if we started moving, right, you're probably looking at three to four years before it's time, we go out for SOQs, select an engineer, get all the studies done.
And I will point out, if we do expand the area, we will have to get the approval of NOAC.
Correct.
Because they are part of our 208 water quality plan.
Correct. So, in my experience with that is, you know, so long as the municipality or the political subdivision is in a, in a, it's just a, that's a prescription, it's not enough PA, it's just a prescription.
Remember, we reduced our prescription, we not, based on capacity.
Up in the Liverpool area, but not...
Oh, changes in that?
I think we may, we've, I know we added some areas and then reduced some others.
Okay, I guess the map, but that is one of the, well, we know policies kind of change up in Kiawka County from time to time.
They do.
I think we have to be mindful of, we have to actually identify as areas of growth, and by policy, they've already indicated want to limit growth outside of Kiawka County. I think we have to be careful.
It's yet another opportunity where the autonomy of our county to take priority. I mean, we need to be able to make the decisions we need to make to manage the growth of our county, and it's probably easier to do that with no participation, but the lack of NOAC's participation doesn't force our responsibility to continue doing those things.
I agree, I agree. Okay.
Nope. That's, thank you.
So you'll start to prepare what we need for the design.
Statement qualifications, yeah, we can start working on that. Yep, and then I think we'll need to get authorization to advertise that out, so.
Okay, all right, and as part of that well development of a financial plan.
Yes, yeah. It is part, I mean, I did include this in my 10-year capital improvement, knowing that something was going to happen, obviously.
Well, we also have to look right now, political timing for grants and so forth. Going at the state level, there's a lot of federal and state money coming down for structure that involves wastewater treatment, water quality, so now is the time to sure, to go after it.
Oh, sure, agreed.
Yeah, okay.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
I'm going to backtrack a little bit, and we're going to go back to department updates. Do you have the Office for Old, we already did do for the proclamation, so we're going to have Erin, there you go. We get a picture for you. You want to show them?
Yes.
Okay, sure. I mean, he doesn't have to be with us, I mean, just for you. Oh, no, please try.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I really appreciate you going back. I apologize for my tardiness. I had a feeling. We are up and going with a limited Wadsworth, so that's truly exciting. The cafe is currently open from 9:00 AM to one serving, both a small variety of breakfast and lunch items. Cold meals, currently, there's all cold meals due to having to move the fire suppressant because a new range was purchased, so hopefully in the next will be done. And also, it's all cash because we do not yet have the point-of-sale system in place to take credit cards. Hopefully in another week, everything is approved, we're just waiting on the shipment of that, and then the master programmer, which is me, but hopefully be able, I know the system, so hopefully I'll be able to get that set up. My senior day, which is coming up on the 16th, we hope you all can make it. Colleen is not going to be able to be there.
And we'll be around.
This year, we have a Wild West theme, as mentioned before. I'm getting short preview with bandanas that we'll be giving out with our little...
There we go.
So one for each of you, whichever color you might want. And those were purchased by the Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation, so we think so. Let's see. Also, Ashley, I have March outreach numbers for your review that I'll go over.
Thank you.
So if you look, we are trending slightly upward, although February is always lighter month because our less days. We have so far serviced over 10,000 home-delivered meat, and almost 1,000 congregant meals, which is quite a number, because that does not voucher program, which is a congregant program, because the voucher program is, we'll start that back up as of June 1st. We are serving people who participate in the voucher program, but it's not the grant-funded meals until we get that back up and running in June. They are being served like a cold sandwich and chips and milk like that to get through the next month. Transit rides are up, 280 rides, 7,000, I'm sorry, 734, 512 in January, and 574 in February. This is not due to the Wadsworth program. Numbers in that program were actually from January, although the number of riders remained at 13. I'd say took was down a little bit, but I'm going to continue to track those numbers in the hopes that will grow. The big increase actually came from the city of Medina. They had more rides in the month of March.
So to be clear, though, even though our flex was doubled, the amount that they're using that, so it could be possibly the flex merged off to...
No, the flex charged off to...
It would be, okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just have to see where that's going to go, if there'll be more riders.
Which shows that our base is actually expanded beyond those.
Yeah, which, I mean, that's a, that's a good sign. But the, actually, it's going to be better once this gets up and roar, all the municipalities, it'll be easier to bill grant before we are paying a gross fee for loop trips. If that loop doesn't exist, everybody is paying through the flex program, and we'll be able to bill the grant for all those rides, yeah.
Of the transit clients you have in Wadsworth, have you heard specific feedback in either direction on the...
I think, I mean, people were very responsive, been down there a couple of times, two roomfuls of people. I think they were very responsive.
My senior day, which is coming up on the 16th, we hope you all can make it. Colleen is not going to be able to be there. This year, we have a Wild West theme, as mentioned before, I'm getting short preview with bandanas that we'll be giving out with our logo. So one for each of you, whichever color you might want, and those were purchased by the Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation, so we think so. Let's see, also, Ashley, I have March outreach numbers for your review, that I'll go over quickly.
Thank you.
So if you look, we are trending slightly upward, although February is always lighter month because our less days. We have so far serviced over 10,000 home-delivered meat, and almost 1,000 congregant meals, which is quite a number, because that does not voucher program, which is a congregant program, because the voucher program is, we'll start that back up as of June 1st. We are serving people who participate in the voucher program, but it's not the grant-funded meals until we get that back up and running in June. They are being served like a cold sandwich and chips and milk like that to get through the next month. Transit rides are up, 280 rides, 7,000, I'm sorry, 734, 512 in January, and 574 in February. This is not due to the Wadsworth program, numbers in that program were actually from January, although the number of riders remained at 13, I'd say took was down a little bit, but I'm going to continue to track those numbers in the hopes that will grow. The big increase actually came from the city of Medina, they had more rides in the month of March.
To be clear, though, even though our flex was doubled, the amount that they're using that, so it could be possibly the flex that merged off to.
No, the flex charged off to.
It would be, okay, that's asking.
Yeah, so we just have to see where, where that's going to go, if there'll be more ridership.
Our bases actually expanded beyond those.
Yeah, which, I mean, that's, that's a good sign, but the, actually, it's going to be better once this gets up and for all the municipalities, it'll be easier to bill grant before we were paying a gross fee for loop trips. If that loop doesn't exist, everybody is paying through the flex program, and we'll be able to bill the grant for all those rides, yeah.
Of the transit clients you have in Wadsworth, have you heard specific feedback in either direction on?
I think, I mean, people were very, Shannon's been down there a couple of times, two roomfuls of people, I think they were very responsive to an option. I know, we have only heard from one client who was difficulty, but I have to say, she called, she, I think she called and talked directly with Shannon.
She also called me.
Okay, I think I might have referred her to that, it's been, I mean, they have crossed that barrier, I think, a lot of people, they don't realize, you don't have to use the app, especially where it might be technologically challenged, you can call transit and say, I would like a ride, and they'll get scheduled, so I just want to reiterate that.
For benefit, she was, she literally was on the fixed route.
Correct.
So, and she didn't like, she had to actually get pickup hour early, which is frankly, not bad.
It is not bad.
But fortunately, because this is right in her.
It was right there.
So, I'd probably have perspective, but when you've doubled the amount of riders, that says that we're serving people with public access.
Yeah, absolutely, and hopefully the number of seniors will, I am assuming that it will.
Good.
Again, thank you for rescheduling a little bit.
Um, okay, Steve, Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Just wanted to mention that we reached an updated revised lease agreement for the courthouse, the 1969 County Courthouse, for purposes of leasing to the city of Medina as a municipal court location. I think you've all probably not had a chance to read through it, I think we've incorporated some necessary changes, there's a few minor updates that need to be still incorporated, but I think we scheduled the discussion for.
Tomorrow.
At 11 o'clock, so I'll go into more detail with you then, if acceptable. And finally, at 10:30, to the county prosecutor is planning, coming by to talk to the expansion at the state level, which affects the locality, the victim assistance program. This involves expand, victim notification and definition of, and he wants to, Mr. Thompson wishes to discuss impact on his office of that expanded program, so.
Okay, we will hold the meeting open.
Yeah, we'll recess until.
We'll read and come back.
Okay, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve, do you have anything?
I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware that the Dial Program, the Digital Inclusion Program, our big kickoff is actually this, this week, we had like a, I'll call it a bit, of it going through Office for Older Adults that Laura was involved with, where a number of classes, now, where they're able to do in-person classes involving, be able also to borrow Chromebooks, creating non-cientific emails, content streaming, and, but right now, as of this, you can go to the library or OA and sign up for these in-person classes, go online, if you have access to a computer, to be able to actually go not only in, but also online courses for content streaming, Chromebook, how to use them, your specific email, other words, and the basics, and online safety will be, are also included in recent classes. All this available not only at our, our office or the county, but you can go in and click and see the videos, you can, with those certificates, be able to get a discount for Medina fiber for, do you remember how many months, I'm trying to remember, for half off the price if you show them. Likewise, those, it allows you to also extend not only your hotspot, your library, you can, there are hotspots available to take out certificates that you've done some of the classwork, you can extend your ability to have those hotspots, to serve areas that are in the future going to get fiber, but right now don't. So like a warm-up program, they can learn the technology before they even have it at home. Also, Chromebooks are available to be loaned out by Office for Older Adults as a library for a period of time, and all this is an initiative to help people improve not only their access to the digital resources, the better utilize them, understand it, and also learn problems, some say, some of the danger, being able to safeguard safe cells based upon their knowledge of, and we know, for those of us that have those, we all come in and age for this journey at different levels, there are a lot of pitfalls and people trying to, I'll just say, have access to your data, obviously predatory practices online, and they are very subject, and thanks, our thanks to the prosecutor, their scams go forth, working with the Dial Program to help educate people on, on seniors, so, but I just want to make sure that gets, gets out there, you can access, there's a brochure out there, but for the library, OA, and of course, the county website.
Anything else?
Nope.
I don't really have anything, but I think I mentioned, when he was up here, it is election day, so.
Yes, it is.
For people who aren't, that radar, it's not, it's not everybody.
Not the whole county, I think 62%.
Yeah, we heard about 2:30. He had something on the ballot, so if you do, please go out and vote.
Okay, so one more announcement, our agenda that we had printed online, we had a meeting, so tomorrow clock, we will have additional commissioners to the courthouse lease, as Chris mentioned, but also annexation deliberation.
But the annexation deliberation is not a public meeting.
It is that portion, portion is not.
Right, okay.
But I just wanted to make, announce it, because it didn't make the list. So we are recess until the prosecutor is here, and then we will be reopening to discuss his budget and personnel.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.